Feet goes off, that feet, feet goes on.
I want to do that again, and I want to stamp, I hear the stamping of feet. Listen, we are delighted to welcome you.
We are delighted to welcome you on a, what, a beautiful day. I mean, it is gorgeous out there. There are no fires, uh, there's no rainfall, uh, but, um, it's good to be alive, isn't it? Thank you. This is the, uh, regular meeting of the Laguna Woods City Council, uh, October fourteenth, twenty twenty. We will, um, open by calling this meeting to order and asking for a roll call. Yoli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Connors? Councilmember McCary?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Horn?
Here.
Mayor Hatch?
Here. I've asked, um, a lady to lead us in the, um, pledge of allegiance, who, um, is an integral part of the success of this city and who keeps us financially sound. Elizabeth Torres, if you'll come up here and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Will all arise?
Please stand if you're able to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for protestants, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one, um, presentation on item four, our ceremonial matter, uh, the annual senior mobility program report. Chris, are you going to give that for us?
Yes, I would love to. There's a, uh, document in your agenda packet that I've taken a couple of screenshots for. But, um, what we wanted to do today was just take an opportunity to update the city council on, um, the status of our senior mobility program. As you'll recall, uh, July first of twenty twenty-three marked kind of a reboot of the senior mobility program. Um, it's taken a couple of, uh, different forms over, uh, the many, many years that it's been in existence. But starting July one of twenty twenty-three, we've, we were able to offer, um, really the deepest discounts and I think the most flexible version of the program that we've ever offered. Um, and I, I think you'll see as we move through some of these stats that that's borne out in the reception and in the participation, uh, in the program. So in the first year of, uh, this rebooted senior mobility program, we enrolled, uh, four thousand three hundred and twenty-five residents. Uh, that, as it says on the screen there, is roughly, uh, about twenty-seven percent of all residents who are eligible to participate in the program. If we use twenty twenty census data, uh, there are roughly sixteen thousand residents who live in Laguna Woods who are at least sixty years of age. So roughly twenty-seven percent of them, uh, have enrolled in this program. As of June thirtieth, I will say that, not to spoil next year's annual report, but we are, um, already over five thousand total enrollees, um, as of today. So this is as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. The average age of participants in the program, this is based on how old they were at the time they enrolled in our program, was just under seventy-seven years, which is very close to the median age of participants. That skews a little bit older than, uh, the median age of all Laguna Woods residents. If we take a look again at the twenty twenty census information, uh, the median age of all Laguna Woods residents is just under, uh, seventy-five years. So the median age for this program skews just slightly higher at seventy-seven. We provided a total of fourteen thousand four hundred and nineteen trips. That's one-way trips, um, in the first year of the program, just under a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand miles traveled. Um, the program fares are different based on, um, the type of location someone's traveling to. So we provided a snapshot, um, based on those differences, affair categories. By a couple of different destinations, you'll see that, uh, John Wayne Airport has been a very, very popular, uh, destination for the program at one thousand five hundred and fifty-four trips in the first year, just under twenty thousand miles total, um, to the airport alone. Uh, other trips are based on, on miles. So you can see we have, uh, quite a few trips that are semi-local, right? If you look at the combination of the city hall trips, Irvine Station, and then that other up-to-ten-mile category, um, that is, you know, somewhere in the nine thousand, uh, trip range, uh, for that first year. Um, one of the things that's been interesting, as the VA has provided more and more services at the Laguna Hills, uh, clinic location, the number of trips that the city has subsidized to the VA facility in Long Beach has dropped dramatically. So we had only, um, twenty-nine trips to the VA facility in Long Beach, uh, in the first year of the program, which still very important, but, um, i- if you think about years past where we had hundreds and hundreds of trips, uh, to the VA Long Beach, a lot of those trips are now much shorter trips, uh, to that Laguna Hills location in the DMV parking lot.
It sounds like the, the DMV, I mean, the, uh, facility there then is really
Yes.
needed, just as the DMV was before they decided to take it away.
Correct. So this breaks down, again, travel by, by destination. Um, we also, on the back of the, uh, the document that's in your agenda packet, we provided a heat map to identify where, uh, trips are more likely to be located. And so, um, one of the takeaways from this exhibit is that, um, when we look at the data, uh, Laguna Woods residents used our program to travel to every single city in Orange County, unincorporated areas as well, um, and also obviously to the VA in Long Beach. So this is truly a all-of-Orange County, uh, travel program. You can see on the heat map, uh, Laguna Woods is outlined over here where my cursor is and the, the blue flag. Um, a lot of the trips that we're providing are still fairly local, right? They're, um, in the broader Laguna Woods area. They, you know, gravitate a little bit, uh, north into the Irvine area and a little bit south into Mission Viejo, Laguna Niguel, Elisa Viejo. Um, and then the, the light blue that you see, um, that's where you pick up that there are trips to all thirty-three other cities, um, in Orange County. But the majority of them are really being provided, uh, Irvine South, if I'm kind of generalizing what we're looking at here. Uh, and then the VA Long Beach is, is over here on the, the far left of the screen. So we wanted to give you the numbers, but also just a visual representation of, of where people tend to be traveling. Program has obviously been, um, very popular, very well-received. Um, certainly has surpassed our expectations for where the program would be. We knew it would be more popular than previous iterations of the program, but having, as we speak today, over five thousand residents enrolled in it is really, really significant. It is, uh, as a result, much more costly for the city. Um, we are fortunate to have funds available for it. Um, there's a recommendation on the, uh, consent calendar for today to make an additional contribution from the general fund. Um, we are awaiting word from the Orange County Transportation Authority whether we'll receive an additional one-time grant, um, of upwards of three hundred thousand to support the program. And then we obviously receive, uh, every other month payments from, uh, OCTA-specific for the senior mobility program. So I think it's great that it's such a, a popular, um, well-received program and I, I don't think a day goes by that we're not enrolling more people in the program. So, um, anyways, just wanted to share some of the good news here, something that I think everybody should be, should be proud of and something that obviously is serving a need. So, um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, but this is just an informational item for the council.
Start over here with, uh...
I think she had her hand up.
Oh, did you? Sorry, Andrew.
Okay, thank you. I was really, really impressed at these numbers when I reviewed them. And at first glance, I was a little disappointed at the numbers, but you clarified that it, these are last year's numbers in terms of enrollment. Uh, the other thing is, it's a really, really popular program. I was at a, um, event in the village where I was giving people information about the, the taxi voucher part of it. And there's still a lot of, of, um, residents inside the village who, um, feel that because they are drivers and continue to drive that they don't have a need for the program. And so I, I use that opportunity to, uh, explain that this could be an adjunct to your, to your driver, driving. And I also, I had an experience with, I, I've been, I signed up from the very beginning, but this pa, uh, two weekends ago, I had an opportunity, I took the opportunity to call a cab and I went to, I met some friends down in Laguna Beach. And to, it was amazing experience for me. Um, I called, I did exactly what I was supposed to do, call, tell them what time I wanted to be picked up, my location. The driver arrived ahead of time. And it's really interesting because the cab companies, you don't have to call them in, uh, to the gate-for-gate clearance. I was informed by the gate ambassador that, uh, we don't have to call in the yellow cab. So that's another thing that makes it easier for, for us as well. But the experience overall was very great.
Great, happy to hear it.
Let me ask you a quick question. Um, having experienced it, would you do it again and again?
Absolutely. I, I would, I would. And as a matter of fact, I shared the experience with my husband, so now he's ready to, um, test it out for himself. But absolutely, I would do it again.
And you were picked up in a, how was the pickup?
The pickup was actually a few minutes early, which was great.
Went at your site, where you, did you use it to come home?
No, I didn't take it back because I went someplace else after that and I got a ride back home with some friends.
Thanks.
I just want to say thank you. I am so proud of this program. We have been doing a lot of presentations to a lot of clubs right now lately and hands down, this is the most favorite service that the city provides and people take advantage of it. The stories about getting left somewhere don't happen anymore, which I'm very happy about, because that would be horrible. But everyone is so pleased with this and I'm just anxious as anything to spread this to other services too. But I am so, so happy about the way the taxi service is working now because transportation is such an issue for seniors and you lose your independence when you can't drive anymore. So this is a great stopgap measure and we do have the best, uh, senior mobility program in the county. Thank you.
I would agree with you on that and I'll just add to that, um, I think Yoli and her staff deserve most of the thanks here. Those four thousand, now five thousand enrollments have all been processed. Here at the front counter, the very first quarter of the program, um, they processed over twenty-two hundred enrollments in three months' time. And each quarter since then, they've processed more than six hundred, some months more than seven hundred. So it's quite a lot of engaging with residents, explaining the program, getting them signed up. So the lion's share of this work is, is definitely being done at, at City Hall's front counter.
You rock, Yoli. Thank you so much for all the work you do.
Carol?
Go ahead.
I, I too want to thank staff, uh, Chris and his staff for designing the program and Yoli and her staff for helping us implement it. Um, and just a note for people who are still driving. Um, I use this program if I have, uh, a medical thing, like a wisdom tooth out or something like that, and I don't want to drive myself home because I might have drugs on board. Um, so I use, I use Yellow Cab to go to it and then I have one of my friends pick me up if you need to be picked up by someone who knows you. And that way your friend doesn't have to schlep twice or sit around and wait for you. So it's a, it's less of an inconvenience or an imposition for your friends. And as well for John Wayne Airport, when you don't want to pay their parking fee if you're going to be gone for a week, this is much easier, much faster. You don't have to impose on anybody. So it's a great program, even if you do drive.
Thank you, Carol.
Yes, I, I want to thank Yoli because I know Yoli's making it easier for them to enter and how gracious she was also at the, uh, GRF party. I, I noticed that, that, that is really helpful and I think that our residents appre- appreciate that. Uh, I also wanted to point out that even though I, I think the program's fantastic and I, and I'm pleased that we can offer this, I'm particularly pleased to find that the numbers are really greater. When you look at the largest number, it's not a fun trip. It's a trip that people need it for, for medical trips. Because if you look at the numbers, the trips one-way, the eight thousand, those are within ten miles. I think we could probably support that those are, those are going to medical appointments. And that means that it's not just a nice thing to have, it's important and it's being used by people who really need it. And that is really what we're supposed to spend money on and I, I'm pleased at that. That, that's a very gratifying thing. Thank you and thank you for the work on it. I'm glad we can offer it, but particularly to the people who really need it and that would be the medical issues. So thank you.
Thank you all. Uh, Chris, a couple of questions. We're at five thousand, maybe plus a little bit right now. Um, obviously money is a big issue. Do you see a cap beyond which it will be in jeopardy? How, how, how big can it grow? I know your Valinda, when they heard about this, really, uh, flipped off. They thought it was a great program. Uh, so what, what is your thought on that?
So, um, I think that where the program is right now has certainly been surprising to staff. I mean, we knew it was going to be popular. It's definitely much more popular than we anticipated. Um, I do agree with Councilmember Moore that a significant portion of these trips are to, to medical destinations, which I think is fantastic. As far as, um, can the program get too big? It really, not to punt to council, but it really is a, a policy decision because I think where we're at right now, we're using all of our senior mobility allocation from OCTA. We will, fingers crossed, hopefully get some additional, at least one-time monies to shore up some of that. But where I, if the program continues in its current state, I think it's an inevitability that there will be some level of ongoing general fund contribution required to sustain it. Um, that ultimately is the council's call, whether or not to make it. But, um, I, you know, it, we keep waiting to figure out where the program peaks. Um, but every month we get another significant bill and significant, uh, list of destinations from California Yellow Cab. So I don't know that we have the ability to incredibly accurately predict what the long-term cost is at this point. Hopefully by the time we get to the budget process, we'll have a better sense of that. But I think it's safe to say that this program is now at a level of success that requires more than just the OCTA contributions.
You read a lot of things in the newspapers these days about misuse of funds and that sort of thing. What are we doing, if anything, or can we do to, uh, uh, ensure the accuracy of the, uh, Yellow Cab billings?
Um, I, we don't have a lot of inaccuracies right now on the Yellow Cab billings. Um, the billings include both a starting and an end point for the trip. Um, we're required to do some reporting to OCTA every month that takes that billing information, breaks it down into categories similar to what you saw today, but also by destination types. They have some categories that they require us to put, um, them into. But, uh, there, there isn't, we haven't really had a, an issue with inaccuracies in, in billing. I think, um, to Yellow Cab's credit, they've been able to manage, just like we saw the significant increase in enrollment. You can imagine that on their dispatch side, it's a corresponding, I mean, that those, you know, fourteen thousand four hundred and nineteen trips all were routed through their dispatch center. So I give them a lot of credit for being able to very, you know, uh,
Accurately monitor.
Quickly and rapidly deal with an increase in participation, particularly when you think about our program as it existed prior to this reboot. I mean, we were doing, you know, a thousand trips a year. Like, it had dropped so significantly that this is a, this is a really significant lift for all parties. So I feel good about the documentation, um, accountability piece.
Right, good, Carol.
I, I forgot that, uh, I did have an incident that happened. My neighbor came over and, um, he had been trying to call a taxi using not the number from the city and he had no vouchers, he wasn't using that. And he looked it up in the phone book and it, this has been going on for a while. So he comes, he's knocking at my door and I'm just leaving to go deliver Meals on Wheels and, and I said, oh, okay. And so I quickly called Yoli and I said, spoke to her really quickly on the phone. I said, he can't get through, what do we do? She gave me the number, we called again and I looked at when he had to be there and I said, you know what, I'm going to have to take you because you're not going to make it. There's no way he could get the contact, they could pick him up. It was over, it, it was a doctor's appointment. It was at the Hoag facility there in Elisa Viejo. So I, I just went ahead and took him and, and dropped him off. And I, and I said, now, you can call me back and, uh, but he didn't. I think he was a little embarrassed about it, but there was no way. They weren't going to get there in time. And I, you know, when I looked at it and the problem that he was having, I thought, I better take him. He's, he's, and then I called, uh, Meals on Wheels and told them that, you know, I might be a couple of minutes late because I was taking, making this trip. But it was funny that I called Yoli, I had to call her to, to get the number and maybe if he'd have been in the voucher, he could have done that. And, uh, you know, it would have all worked out. But anyway, I forgot about that, that my, you know, taking him up there and dropping him off.
Yeah, one of the benefits of participating in the city program, aside from obviously the fact that the fares are subsidized, is there is a Laguna Woods-specific phone number that routes you to dispatchers who are familiar with the Laguna Woods program to be able to get that transportation scheduled, um, at your convenience. So it, there, there are, I think, a number of benefits. Certainly if you're a resident of Laguna Woods, you're sixty or over. Um, from my perspective, there isn't a, a ton of logic to calling Yellow Cab directly because you get it cheaper through us and you get, um, some, some dedicated staffing who are probably more able to immediately deal with your needs.
Um, for Chris, this question came up, um, at one of the events. It probably was the, the GRF birthday from a member of the public. Do they have cabs that are equipped for mobility vehicles?
Yes.
Okay, you just have to specify that when you call.
Yeah, it's important for them to let the dispatcher know that they need either a wheelchair-accessible van or, or something else. They, if they share their, um, physical needs with the dispatcher, they'll be able to route a vehicle that is appropriate for them. The, absent that, you may still get an accessible vehicle. Um, it could be that that's the cab that's closest to and that got the call. Um, but there's no guarantee unless you actually verbalize it with the dispatcher.
It, uh, excuse me, it dawned on me, we are a city. The village is part of the city. What are we doing to publicize this program in the, uh, units that are not within the village?
Mm-hmm. When we launched the program, we did some outreach to them. We sent the flyers and, and whatnot out there. They're less centralized than the Laguna Woods Village folks, but I know we have members of the public who participate that are not Laguna Woods Village residents. Um, but yeah, the, the information's all on our website, it's all here at City Hall. If you live in Laguna Woods, regardless of whether you're in Laguna Woods Village and you're sixty years or, or older, you're eligible for the program.
Did y'all hear that? Anybody here younger than sixty? Good.
I think we got some public comments, yes.
Yes, James, you want to speak?
Can I ask?
Yes, please come up here.
I just wondering, I want to say the same thing. My wife and her friends are very, very like this mobility program. Uh, but my question to Chris is, uh, how's so far the total expense
I was thinking.
compare to the amount of a budget? Because that, because I ask so many friends, some of them just moving in, they don't even know it. So depends on if we're really under budget, we can maybe do more little propaganda. But if we exceeded the budget, we have to be careful.
So, so we, we have exceeded the budget, is the long and the short of it. The budget that the city adopted, uh, two, or a year and a half ago, um, really assumed a lower level of participation. So we are using all of the Orange County Transportation dollars that we get for the senior mobility program. Um, we also used all of the, kind of, those funds that had been built up over time due to lack of use. Uh, we're now recommending adding some money from the general fund, hoping we're going to get the one-time additional grant funds from OCTA. Uh, but right now our billings are, what we're paying California Yellow Cab is between sixty and seventy thousand dollars a month. So it, this is an expensive...
That's under budget, huh? I mean, we still have extra money.
That's way more than we anticipated spending.
Oh, okay. Well, have to be careful then.
We, we are not minting money, I want you to understand that, folks.
I, I, I can't help but bring up the OCTA and, uh, they have an opening. I, I don't know if anyone is interested, but they, there is no streetcar yet and no statement of when there's going to be a streetcar, but the tracks are all over the place. And it, the last time I heard the number, it was like two-thirds of a billion dollars to go four miles. So what would be a better way to spend the money? I, I think sixty thousand a month doesn't even look like anything next to that.
Spit. Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, good.
That's enough.
Thank you, all right. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that because we've gotten some new places in that new dispensary, we got seventy-three thousand dollars last month from that new dispensary. So I, I think it's going to fit in our budget and it's wonderful that it's going to our residents. Thank you.
All right, if nothing else, um, this item will be, uh, we, do we need, need a motion to accept it?
Just an informational item.
It has been now received and filed and, uh, I don't know how many of us here besides me belong to the program, but, uh, some of us do and it's a great program. We now come to item five, public comments on non-agenda items. I have a couple of, um, requests to speak here. Uh, you can talk for three minutes each on any item you would like to talk and then I'm going to exercise, yes. Why don't you, James, just fill out a card? And I'm going to ask, um, our chief, uh, from, uh, uh, station, no, you sit down yet. I'm going to call in order.
I thought you'd just call.
No, I was, I thought he was going to walk over and I suggested he fill out a...
Okay, does, does the chief go during this time though? I thought he would go...
Uh, you can do it here if you'd like to, if not, during the fire report at the end of the agenda.
Okay.
I'm going to ask the, um, chief, Neville, to speak during this. Not yet, chief, I'll call on you and...
We go through that a lot.
It's a non-agenda item, but I thought the community would be very interested in knowing what has happened about the injured firefighters and what they happened back east and, uh, uh, the two hurricanes back there. Because today or this week has been a, a momentous, uh, part of that for us. All right, um, public comments, uh, the first one I received was Kate Van Camp.
Thank you, I'm Kate Van Camp. And on this beautiful day, I have a very important thing to say, which is thank you, Mayor Hatch. You have been a spectacular person of, uh, commitment, service to our city. You always project, whether it's in person at any event or here or watching on TV, that you really care. And just as a normal citizen, I just want to thank you for all your time, your talent, your hard work, probably coming when you're sick or when you're feeling good. You're always pleasant, charming, and I've spoken to many South County City Councils. to many South County city councils, and I think you set a great tone because nothing is friendlier or more pleasant when it comes to a city council meeting than Laguna Woods. Thank you.
Well, you're very kind. Thank you.
Very nice.
Appreciate it. It was very nice of you.
Did you pay her to come and say?
Oh, I think I, I saw she had a note from you.
Okay. You wouldn't say, or just think about putting that in writing, would you, so that I could give it to my wife?
It's recorded, I think you.
Yes, true. That's true.
Vicky Johnson, come up, Vicky.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councils. It's, I'm Vicky Johnson, Laguna Woods resident, and it's campaign season. And I too would like to thank all of you for serving for office, and those of you that are running again. I wish you well. I hope it's a good experience. I think it's challenging. You do not reiterate it much. So, so thank you for, for serving in these public roles. And I've learned a lot from you. I wish, and speaking of campaigning, things are still happening in Irvine. Last time I talked, an Irvine city council member received a one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar donation from the firefighters' union. Now it's come out, another hundred-and-fifty thousand was given for TV ads. So that's three-hundred-thousand from the firefighters' union to a city council member who serves on the firefighters' authority, the OCFA, Orange County Firefighters Authority. And she's also on the OCPA board. Now, this is just a lot of money, and it's strange. So things are happening. I asked last time, please direct the staff to at least study a bit the influence of lobbying and moneyed interests on our campaigns and on our irregular decisions, because it's swirling in the air, strange things just over in Irvine. And I also like to recommend that Laguna Woods, so all the time about campaigning, institute term limits for the city council members. And not the kind where you leave for a couple years and come back, but some sort of like lifetime term limits, because I think it is good to rejuvenate the council with new people. Lastly, and it was interesting to hear, seventy-five thousand dollars from the cannabis store. But because of what's happened in Irvine, I mentioned this last time, a Democratic operative, well-known as a campaign manager for several Irvine city council members, pled guilty to bribery for attempting to bribe two Irvine city council members to get support for a cannabis store in Irvine. Now, I don't know why they didn't go, come over here if they didn't have to bribe somebody. But again, this too is swirling in the air. And I think, I recommend myself that the license for this cannabis store be rescinded. I personally don't like the huge cannabis sign. Something is happening with these store licenses. I guess it's pretty lucrative to have that kind of return, just on the income to the city. But it's another form of corruption, and city council members, not just Irvine, are being pressured to approve these cannabis stores. So personally, I recommend rescinding the license of this one. If we have one store, there'll be probably others coming to ask because you've opened the door. But again, thanks very much, and wish you all well on the campaign. And thank you again for serving for city council and the, the staff that makes all this happen.
Well, last Friday on the globe, I noticed your city has a little announcement that Yoli put it up. Last Friday, there was some sort of activity Friday morning. And that was good to know. So my point is, I wish every week on the globe should, should sort of announce something going on in the city, so that our residents know, oh, that's what city's going, doing things for us. That's just my comments.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief?
My tab?
Come on up.
Don't stand up until you know for sure.
Thank you, James. Are you, you're through. Good.
Thank you.
All right. I want you to know that most firemen are good-looking as this.
Oh.
Here we go.
Tell us about what's been happening.
Well, good afternoon. Thanks for having me here today. Mayor Hatch, city council, and the citizens. Today, a number of things. We recently had our open house at Station 22, and a lot of the stations throughout the county opened up our doors to the residents, and it was a big success. This is great for our members to be able to show the communities that we serve just exactly what it is that we do. So that was very well received, and that was last Friday. So we had a lot of people attending that. Our urban search and rescue team, which the mayor mentioned earlier, is returning back from the East Coast. Our urban search and rescue team was out assisting the East Coast from the Hurricanes, Helene and Milton. For those of you who don't know, the urban search and rescue team is comprised of multiple specialty members, from search to search and rescue, to canine search, to medical, to hazmat technicians, also to structural specialists. And this team is very, very, very highly skilled and trains a lot. And they're self-sustained. So what that means is when they go and they mobilize to different areas throughout the United States, they can function without having to have any kind of logistical support from wherever it is that they go. So they bring their own generators. They're bringing their own fuel. They're bringing their own water. They're bringing their own food, everything that they need to be able to help out in disaster situations. So this is a FEMA program, which Orange County Fire Authority contracts with FEMA and provides the personnel. The personnel are from Orange County Fire Authority, surrounding fire departments that are not within the Fire Authority, cities of Orange, cities of Anaheim. And also, we do have specialists on there that are structural specialists that work for different cities and in different capacities. So they're returning this week. Some have already returned, and the rest of them will be returning on Thursday. So we look forward to hearing from them, but they are all healthy. Some good work was performed out there, and I'm sure they're tired and are glad to be back. Another thing going on is the Tivoli helipad is gonna be having, on the twenty-eighth of this month, there is going to be a press conference. And the Tivoli helipad is gonna be featuring the helipod, which is a five-thousand-gallon water source that our helicopters can dip out of to get water from. And it's a dedicated water source up in Aliso Viejo in the Tivoli area, which is on the slope of Aliso Woods Canyon. So that is fed by hydrant, and it's always there for us to dip out of, and it can replenish its water supply really fast. So with our new Blackhawk helicopters that are coming in to dip out of them, which can take up to a thousand gallons, or another helicopter that we have called our Quick Reaction Force can take three-thousand gallons of water, they can replenish that helicopter by the time it comes back and does its drop. So that's on the twenty-eighth. You're all welcome to come and take a look at it. It should be pretty special. But that's something that's going on right now to help mitigate and battle the threat of wildfires, which is one of the biggest threats to the citizens of Orange County.
Now, I understand.
You look like you have a question.
I understand the dogs stayed back in North Carolina or wherever. And what, what do they do particularly back there? They're effective, aren't they?
So they are looking for people who are trapped, and they're able to sniff out when people are underneath rubble, where we wouldn't be able to necessarily hear them, even if they were screaming or be able to see them. So the dogs use their senses that they have to find people in these situations. Now, I don't know if any stayed. I can get that for you.
Well, mail, mail, send us an email and say they were going to stay
Okay.
Because of Hilton.
Well, you know more than I do, then.
No, I don't know more than you do. But anyway. How are things at Station 22 right now?
Great. Yeah. Morale is good. They're as busy as ever. But no, everyone there is very positive and enjoys, loves the job, so and serves the community.
Thank you.
Do you have an update on injured firefighters?
All right, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Update on injured firefighters?
All right, go ahead.
I heard.
Oh, did you? Good.
Yeah. So I'm pleased to announce that the injured firefighters have, all except for one, have left the local hospitals. We had one that went to a rehab facility in Colorado. Also, another one went to a rehab facility in Downey. And others have been released to their homes and are going through therapy still to help recover from their injuries. Unfortunately, we still do have one member that is in the hospital at OC Global and is in critical condition still. So not good. But it is good to hear about the other members of the organization that are steadily making an incline or an increase in their treatment.
Thank you, Chief. Carol?
Yeah, I did have a question. I met someone recently at a conference that it was, that a person with Big Bear Fire, and she said that there had been hotspots, and at that point, that they were back to seventy percent. Do you know anything about that? That's, isn't that the line fire? I believe it is.
Oh, okay. I'm confused. I, I didn't know what fire you're referring to.
Yeah, I believe that's the line fire, because we, we kind of get the impression they're not in the news anymore, that everything's out and finished, and that's not quite the fact, particularly right now, because we're coming in, well, we've really passed the major time when we usually have a Santa Ana windsweeper often in September, is that seasons change. You get them spring and fall. And those winds could come up. But she said that they are still having, you know, hotspots pop up. So what is your?
That's, that's correct. And there are flare-ups that we have on fires. Sometimes these flare-ups are what we call on the interior of the fire. So there is no threat of them escaping the containment line, and that will happen. However, there has been some flare-ups on the line fire that has reduced the ability to get the containment. And that's why you're seeing it hover around the seventy percent mark. One thing to pay attention to, though, is, is there growth on the fire? Is it expanding in acres? And if you're not seeing it expanding in acres, then the forward progress of the fire has been stopped. But it's important to point out that what we have is called containment line, and that's what we want to get around, the entire perimeter of the fire. And that's what our hand crews do and our dozers. And a lot of times, just because there's not smoke in the air, like you saw the airport fire, doesn't mean that the fire threat is gone. Because like you said, when we do have winds, when we do have temperature changes or effects from the weather, this can start the fire again, and it can go outside of the line. So even after that forward movement or progress of the fire has been stopped, there's still the threat. And like you said, we do have, this is our busy time of year. If you remember, two years ago, we had the Silverado Fire. Actually, it was three years ago. And then after that, I'm trying to remember the name of the fire we had out there. But it is December, November is when we do have our critical winds. So I would just urge all the residents to go on OCFA's website or look at the website, look at the ready, set, go part of the website. And that's all about preparedness and what to do in the event of a wildfire threatening the communities. You know, around here, I would say, you know, some of the areas that are, could be prone to it are off of Santa Maria, Gate 10 and 11, where those houses back up to the urban interface. So there's good stuff on there. There's good tips. There's even people that'll come out from our community risk reduction departments, and they will survey the homes out there to say, okay, you know, this is something you can do to what we call harden your home, which is maybe pulling furniture away from the house, or combustibles, or that sort of thing, or cleaning out your gutters that have leaves in it, putting screens on your attic vents to stop embers from going inside your attic. Because a lot of times, what happens is it's not so much the fire front and the head fire coming through the community or the homes, it's afterwards. It's these things that develop and embers that start to grow, and that can help tremendously. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Stay healthy.
You too.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? You, you, sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to respond to Ms. Vicky and her comments. Here in Laguna Woods, there is, we have for ourselves a limit of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per donation. That is the maximum amount that a person or organization could donate to a campaign. So nobody here is getting a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from anybody. The California Fair Political Practices Commission requires that any candidate who receives donations of two-thousand dollars or more, or spends two-thousand dollars or more, must have a campaign bank account, a campaign treasurer, must file all kinds of reports. So I myself have made it a personal practice not ever to spend or take in more than two-thousand dollars per election. And in this town, you can get elected for two-thousand dollars. Adjacent towns, it's like seventy-five thousand dollars to run for the city council. So that's good for us. The second thing is, on term limits, unlike other cities, a lot of people, most people don't come onto this council until they're in their sixties or seventies. And it takes, at least to my mind, it takes two terms to get yourself good and solidly acclimated, so you know what's going on. And then the next two terms, you know what you're doing, and you, you are moderately skilled at the business of being a council member. So it, it was originally decided back when the city was founded not to set term limits under the theory that God sets the term limits for people who join the council when they're already seventy years old. So I don't know that there's an appetite here on the council to set term limits. I just thought I'd let you know that. Thank you.
Term limits are being set by someone else. So, all right. Hearing no more requests, we will move on to item six, the city treasurer's report. Elizabeth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be presenting the treasurer's report for the month ended September 30, 2024. As of September 30, cash and investments ended with a total of thirteen million nine hundred eighty-eight, five hundred thirty-three thousand. The general fund had an operating cash and investments balance of six million nine hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred sixty-eight, and reserves of almost three-point-eight million. The special revenue funds had an ending balance of three million two hundred sixty-seven thousand and three hundred sixty-five dollars. Cash and investments are broken up into cash and cash equivalents that had an ending balance of six hundred twenty-five thousand two hundred and one. Pulled money investment accounts had an ending balance of six million eight hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred seventeen, with LEAF at eight hundred thirty-eight thousand and OSIP at just over six million. Investments consist of certificates of deposits, which had an ending balance of six million four hundred sixty-three thousand four hundred fifteen, which totaled the thirteen million nine hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred thirty-three. The city's trust funds, as of September 30th, consisted of other post-employment benefits trust account with an ending balance of one hundred forty-eight thousand seven twenty-two, which had a net gain of two thousand nine hundred thirty-one, and the pension liability trust account with an ending balance of one hundred eighty-one thousand three hundred eighty-seven, and a net gain of three thousand four hundred sixty-eight. There was not, the month of September was a pretty uneventful month. There were no transfers in and out of the LEAF or OSIP accounts, and there were no CDs that matured in purchases. Next month's meeting in November, I'll be going over the, my, the first quarter ended, excuse me, the first quarter of the fiscal year ended September 30th. So next month, I'll be going over those results. And with that said, our recommendation to the city council is to receive and file the city treasurer's report for September 2024.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council, Carol?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Elizabeth, I looked at the investment ladder, and our interest return on that six million plus centers around, the ladder is pretty good. We have a number of things coming to maturity within the next year. And then, then we go in the midterm, and then we have a few in the ten-year or up to that period of time. The interest rates, with a couple of exceptions, are in the mid fours and five percents of that. Do you have a sense, and this may not be a fair question, but on those Do you have a sense, and this may not be a fair question, but on those that are becoming due in the next year or two, our interest return will be probably a point, at least a point lower, probably, won't it?
Yes, interest rates are currently going down.
Yeah, but, which is why we have a ladder, obviously. But my sense is that, or what is your sense now, as far as the continued diminution of the return of our invested monies, what, maybe four percent? Have you given that any thought, or have you talked to anyone that is...
Our CDs have a term of, you know, different, like you said, it's a ladder, and the yield rate is fixed for those, for the amount of time that we have the CD, until they mature. Currently, CDs are going down, they're decreasing, and we're always looking at it, at the CDs that are, you know, out there, and we try to take advantage of when they're at higher rates. And right now, we, I think it was last month, we purchased four CDs, because they were all at over four percent, so we took advantage of that. In December, we have two that are maturing, and once those mature, we will look at the rates and see how they are and see if we can...
Are you finding that everything now is callable?
Um, no, not everything is callable.
That CDs are now all callable rather than...
No, they're not all callable.
Yeah, no, they, what I'm seeing is that they're, everybody's making all of their invested, all of their capital requests are now callable. You're not finding that?
No.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, I'll just add that what we told the Investment Policy Review Committee the last time we met was, we would anticipate that next year, look, again, looking at investments over a 12-month term, that investment revenue will be down, not only because interest rates are dropping, and we anticipate will continue to drop for some time, but also because the investable fund balance that we have will be dropping. We've benefited the last couple of years from things like the American Rescue Plan Act, which have infused our, you know, assets with one-time money. As we get to the end of spending that down, we expect to have both a lower investable fund balance and lower interest rates, which to Liz's point is why we did what we could to purchase as many CDs at higher interest rates as possible without affecting cash flow. So even with those kind of best practices having been taken, next year's interest earnings will be less than this year's interest earnings.
And that $14 million is not a hard figure that we're going to have available to us for some extended period of time, particularly if this council decides there are programs that we do need in maintaining the city as a functioning entity, correct?
Yeah, we have still a pretty good amount of one-time money on the books that isn't going to be there for the foreseeable future. So yeah, that $14 million, I think we've been good stewards of the general fund in the meantime, and so it'll still probably stay relatively high, but a lot of that still is monies that are locked up in like special revenue funds for street purposes and so forth, so they're not really, yeah, it totals $14 million, but it's not $14 million that you can spend on anything you want to spend it on.
Yeah, but we have that as our reserve for specific projects that this city needs to do.
Yes.
In order to function soon.
And we have those property taxes that are going up.
Yeah, property tax does, I mean, we say this during the budget process, but one of the good things about the way that this city is funded is property tax is our largest source of revenue, which isn't the case for every city. And while property tax doesn't increase by huge margins year after year, it does...
Remember, it's compounded.
Yeah, it does trend upward every year, which is, certainly allows for a greater level of stability than if our major revenue sources were, for instance, sales tax, because we had car dealerships, or even TOT with, you know, hotel stays and the cost of stays fluctuating with the economy. So we are lucky in many ways that our revenue is as boring as it is. Unless you're paying them. We all, we all pay property tax, yes. We all pay property tax and might have our own opinions on it, but...
That's true.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Liz.
All right, and I think you had a motion and a second, but you didn't call for a vote.
All right.
I'll move.
We have the motion and the second. Motion was made by Councilmember Moore, seconded by Councilmember Connors.
Okay, well, probably if I point my finger at you, just say I move it, okay? I second it. All right, then I'll turn this way next time. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, passes. The consent calendar is considered routine and is approved by a single vote. There will be no separate discussion of any item unless a member of the city council or the city staff requests that a specific item be removed from the calendar for special discussion. Members of the public may address the city council on items appearing on the consent calendar, regardless of whether the item is removed for separate discussion or consideration of that matter. All right?
I move the consent calendar.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any member of the public wish to speak? All right, do any of you wish to pull anything? All right, we'll take a vote on that. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nobody opposed, that passes. Okay. We come now to Item Eight, 8.1, the Traffic Violator Apprehension Program Fee.
We have two public hearings today. The first is that Traffic Violator Apprehension Program Fee. This is pretty straightforward. The TVAP fee, or Traffic Violator Apprehension Program Fee, is something that's collected by the County of Orange. It's at a rate set by the city council, but it's intended to recover the sheriff's department's costs related to removing and impounding, storing, and then ultimately releasing vehicles that they've impounded under the authority of the California Vehicle Code. So in 2021, the city council established $144 per removal of a vehicle fee. The sheriff's department has completed another cost study that's included in your agenda packet. They are recommending an increased fee to $174 per removal of a vehicle, so a $30 per removal increase. These fees go to subsidize some traffic-related centralized services offered by the sheriff's department. The Board of Supervisors has already increased the fee for unincorporated areas. The sheriff's department's now working with individual cities that they serve to complete similar increases of those fees, so that essentially, no matter where your vehicle is impounded, if it's in the sheriff's department's jurisdiction, there's a flat fee of $174. There is an opportunity today for a public hearing, during which you might receive public testimony on the subject. After you close the public hearing, staff's recommendation is that you adopt a resolution titled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Repealing Resolution Number 21-04, Adopting a Modified Administrative Fee to Recover No More Than the Orange County Sheriff's Department's Reasonable Administrative Costs Relating to the Removal Impound Storage or Release of Vehicles Properly Impounded Pursuant to the California Vehicle Code, the Traffic Violator Apprehension Program Fee, and Determining That the Fee Is Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act." I'll just note that we have very few vehicles that are impounded, so this isn't a fee that is charged with any great frequency in Laguna Woods, but nevertheless, the need periodically arises for the fee to be charged, and then the resolution that we're recommending today would have this fee take effect tomorrow. With that, I would recommend that you open the public hearing and entertain any testimony on the subject.
The public hearing is now open. Anyone wish to speak on this? All right, it's now closed. We will now hear a motion by a member of the council and any comments you wish to make. Any approves this?
Are you going to read it?
I already read it.
Okay, you read the whole...
Oh, yeah, Julie, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, we've read the title, we're okay.
That's, I thought we did. Can you second it? Second it? Okay, any discussion? Go ahead.
Is this fee collected directly by the sheriff for cars impounded in Laguna Woods, or does, is it collected by us and passed through the sheriff?
No, it's collected directly by county staff.
So we just authorize them if a vehicle's impounded?
Yes.
On our city property, then that's how much they can charge?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, the county doesn't have the ability to set fees for incorporated cities, so the city councils have to adopt this fee.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Move on to 8.2.
Okay, so the second public hearing today is about speed limits on city roads. I want to start by making clear that the city only establishes speed limits on public roadways. That would be the portions of El Toro, Molten Ridge Route, and Santa Maria that are located within our jurisdiction. There is a very specific process set forth in the California Vehicle Code that governs how municipalities have to establish local speed limits. Primarily, municipalities do so to deviate from what would otherwise be statewide speed limits that are generally much higher than you would want set on a local road, and also to allow the use of electronic devices like LiDAR or radar for speed enforcement on those streets. There's a lot of nuance in California Vehicle Code, but I'll just boil it down to a very simple level and say, state law requires that speed limits be set using objective engineering analysis. We are not able to set speed limits based on how fast we think somebody should drive on a road, how fast we would like cars to move on a road, personal perception, personal preference. That's not something that factors into how cities are able to set speed limits. Generally speaking, and there are some nuances to that that are set forth in the agenda packet, but generally speaking, cities are required to set speed limits at the actual speed that 85% of motorists travel on a road, which is sometimes referred to as the 85th percentile speed. So every seven years or so, when we go about this exercise of recommending speed limits, the precursor to it is an actual engineering and traffic survey that includes actually capturing how fast vehicles are traveling on the 11 roadway segments that we set speeds for. So there is an engineering and traffic survey that is included in your agenda packet. It was prepared by traffic engineers at Iteris Incorporated, the city's traffic engineering firm. That engineering and traffic survey includes that objective analysis on which these speed limit recommendations are based. The long and short of this is that we're recommending really no changes to most of the city's speed limits. We're recommending that you reestablish most of the speed limits, with the exception of El Toro Road between Aliso Creek Road and Caysinora, both the east and west travel lanes. We recommend reducing that speed limit from 50 miles per hour to 45 miles per hour, and that's again supported by the engineering and traffic survey that's included as Attachment B to this agenda item. So there are also, in your agenda packet, we included kind of a before and after map that shows you the speeds by roadway segments, but just that El Toro between Aliso Creek and Caysinora section would change. There is an opportunity again today for a public hearing and any public testimony. After that public hearing, we recommend that the city council approve the introduction, first reading of an ordinance, read by title with further reading waived, titled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Amending Section 8.06.010 of the Laguna Woods Municipal Code to Adopt and Establish Speed Limits for El Toro Road, Molten Parkway, Ridge Route Drive, and Santa Maria Avenue, Including Reduced Speed Limits on El Toro Road Between Aliso Creek Road and Caysinora, and Reestablishment of All Other Existing Speed Limits, and Determining and Certifying That the Ordinance Is Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act." This is an ordinance, so we would, if the city council takes the recommended action today, it would reappear on your agenda at your next meeting. If the city council adopted the ordinance at that meeting, it would be effective 30 days thereafter. So I say that to say, even if the city council takes the recommended action today, those speed limits are not changing tomorrow. They would change a couple of months down the road. With that, I would recommend you open the public hearing, and then after the public hearing, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Public hearing is now open. Any comments from the public on this particular issue? Well, Vicki?
Whoa!
Vicki, why don't we start with you? And if you're going to repent that you've been driving too fast, why feel free to do it.
I'm sorry, Verhatch, I can't hear you.
All right, go ahead.
I'm sorry I didn't review the agenda packet, but could we go lower than 45?
Ah.
All right.
We can't remember, we can't do what we want, can't choose.
I hurt my leg, so it'd be difficult...
All right, go ahead.
Julie, would you, would you grab the microphone for Mike?
Thank you.
No worries, we won't make you get up.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. I don't understand this engineering. It sounds, no, I understand engineering, I'm a mathematician, right? But I don't understand the mechanistic way that this is decided. I mean, certainly, driving, you've got speeders out there, and they kind of drive the speed of traffic. You could say, well, that's what people want, because everybody follows them, but that's too mechanistic. There ought to be some way to say, hey, wait a minute, this is going too fast. And that's not an engineering kind of statement, that's just something that you observe.
Could be an opinion, though.
So, I don't, I don't know. I wish someone would explain to me why the mechanism overrides the person.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna preface this by saying I don't have a good explanation for you.
I'm sure you don't.
The California Vehicle Code is very particular. The state has long stood by this 85th percentile speed as how speed limits are supposed to be set. There are other factors that can be considered, but they can generally only result in a five-mile-per-hour reduction from that 85th percentile speed. So we can look at things like sightlines, grades, we can look at actual collision statistics, that's one of the things that we already have to look at as part of it. But again, in general, that only allows for a very nominal reduction. I will point out that actually, in the case of the two segments that we are recommending be reduced, we are using some of those additional factors to justify the reduction. The 85th percentile speed for both of those segments, it ranged between 50.2 miles per hour and 52.7 miles per hour. We are able to reduce that by five miles per hour nevertheless because of the collision records at that intersection, and also significant sources of bicyclists and pedestrians, the presence of bike lanes, sidewalks, transit stops, et cetera. But even with those extra factors taken into account, 45 is the lowest that we can get it to. So I know that we hear from residents from time to time that, gosh, it would be great if traffic was moving at 30 miles an hour or 35 miles per hour, and I don't think that you would get much disagreement from staff that that would be a great speed limit in a number of settings, but state law is state law, and we've, I think what you're seeing in these recommendations is us doing the maximum that we can to reduce speed limits. We just can't, you know, go much further than this, so...
I understand. May I just say, there ought to be a more peaceful roads category, more peaceful roads.
Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you. Carol?
An interesting thing in this...
Can we, I'm sorry, before we do the council comments, if there are no more public comments, we can close the public hearing.
We'll close the public comment thread, Carol.
An interesting thing in all this, in the past, we wanted everything cleared out, no trees, you can see a long way, and it only made people drive faster. Studies have shown, when you have trees, believe it or not, people can't see as far, and they tend not to drive as fast. So trees are helpful, even though we've had people telling us to take out all the trees, get those trees out, we can't see, the trees actually have a beneficial effect, and I think, I think we, either I shared it with you, or we talked about it, I can't recall.
Yeah, we definitely talked about it. One of the, if the city wants to reduce the speed limit on a street, really, the go-to way to do that is what's referred to as a road diet. So you do things that shrink the road, you do things like adding trees, you add bike lanes, you compress the lanes of traffic, you eliminate lanes of traffic. That has a, as Councilmember Moore was saying, that has a tangible effect on driver behavior, so it causes people to drive slower. But what we can't do is just take a 50 mile per hour and drop it down to 30, even if we might like to. But of course, when you start talking about road diets, not to overcomplicate things, but the idea of narrowing lanes of travel, of reducing lanes of travel, might be attractive to some, but then... to some, but then we have to remember that we live in a region, and if you go from four lanes of traffic in a city outside of ours to three lanes of traffic or two lanes of traffic, then you bottleneck and you create a whole different type of problem. So there is no simple answer to reducing speed limits. I just will leave you with assurance that we've done what we can from an objective engineering standpoint to lower them to the extent possible.
All right. Any one to comment here? I have a comment.
I was gonna move the...
Go ahead.
The ordinance, move the resolution?
Ordinance, you're correct. Okay.
All right, I'm looking at, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the two maps.
Yep.
The speed limit is forty miles an hour from Cai, from town up to Molton Parkway, and then it goes to forty-five on the existing routing up to Gate Seven. And then it goes fifty miles an hour down to Aliso Creek Road. And then the new one carries with it the continuation from Bolton down to Gate Eleven at forty-five, brings it to forty-five. So it's a consistent speed all the way down. What happens in my... Because I use these two gates most of the time. And Gate Nine, when it comes out there, there's a blind spot to the left. The road curves, so if you're doing fifty miles an hour, you are moving fast to get to that intersection, and I can't see it waiting to get out, even though the signals are synced. So what happens is, everybody waits and hopes that nobody's coming along and hope that everybody doesn't turn right against the no right turn on the signal. But what is happening now is the forty-five mile an hour limit from Gate Nine, which is the segment that you could do forty-five before it turns into fifty, simply goes forty-five, and it makes all the sense in the world to me to just say, everybody drives forty-five, you don't get to go up to fifty, and then go back to forty-five. So I think it's a good move, and I think the five mile limit is the way to go and not have it lower than forty-five because that's what you're doing. All right, any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
You have a motion in a second.
Yeah. Moved?
It moved. It was moved. It was seconded.
So you can just vote?
Do you second that?
We're taking the vote. Yeah, it was seconded.
Fine, moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Now... Where are we?
Nine point one.
Nine? Okay. Fiscal year, the capital improvement program, nine point one.
Yes, so we... This is our quarterly update for you on our capital improvement program. I don't have an extensive presentation today. I did want to give you updates on two projects in particular. The second phase of the El Toro and Molton Parkway Water Quality Treatment Project. The first phase, as you'll recall, was the bio-swell that we created on Molton Parkway. The second phase of the project is the installation of a modular wetland system in the vicinity of Woods End. It's down there on Aliso, or El Toro, near Aliso Creek Road. You awarded that construction contract in June. We had an initial delay related to the fabrication of the modular wetland system. The modular wetland system has now been fabricated and is in the possession of the contractor that will be installing it. We have a second delay, however. When the contractor went out to verify the site, there was a Cox Communications cable that didn't show up on the plans or with the kind of advanced analysis that we had done. So there's a cable that needs to be relocated in order to install the modular wetland system. Cox Communications will be doing that for us, but there is a bit of a lead time on that in order for them to get their crew out to move it the, you know, foot or so that it needs to be moved to be out of the construction area. So we're hoping that that gets taken care of relatively quickly here, but I just wanted to check in with you on this project and say that we are definitely still working on it, the cable can be moved, Cox is being engaged in that process, but this, this project is taking longer to construct than we had certainly initially intended. The second, and I will, let me just back up and say that even with that delay and even with the charge for Cox Communications to move that cable, we are still cautiously optimistic that we will be within budget and not need to attach additional appropriations to this project. The Woods End project, I wanted to give you a heads up that we had anticipated using ARPA monies, the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, for this project. As you know, we have a deadline, end of December, we need to obligate those ARPA funds. Because we're in October now, mid-October, and we're still not out to bid on the Woods End project, we have some final design tweaks and some coordination with the county left to do. Out of an abundance of caution, we plan at your next meeting to recommend swapping the funding for this project with general fund dollars and moving the ARPA monies to other capital projects. The end result will still be that everything that we've said will get done, will still get done. It will just be a kind of musical chairs with the funding sources in order to make sure that we don't lose any of that ARPA money at the end of the year. Liz and I are working over the next couple of weeks to make sure that every penny of that ARPA money gets spent by that December deadline, spent or obligated. One of the things that we'll also be recommending is the addition of a new capital improvement project. This is our circulation improvement project for the year. We have collected kind of a laundry list of small transportation-related improvements that we need to make with the availability of those ARPA monies. We've assembled them into a project that isn't a huge project, but it's a project nonetheless. These would, they're roughly before parts of the project. One would be relocating a pedestrian crosswalk button that's located at the southeast corner of El Toro Road, so it's the pedestrian button next to the lanes exiting Gate One for making that east-west crosswalk transition. We were, it was brought to our attention actually by a resident that the current location of that crosswalk button is difficult, if not impossible, for someone in a wheelchair to reach over and push. There's a grade change there, so there's a curb elevation change. So we have engaged Iteris, our traffic engineer, to identify an alternate location for that button that'll make it accessible for all persons. We have also identified the desire to add an additional overhead safety light on a new pole at the southeast corner of Molton Parkway in Villa Campo Verde. This would be for the crosswalk that takes you from the Willow Tree Center to like the Saddleback Golf Cars corner there. At that intersection, there's a safety light over each end of the crosswalk, the two crosswalks that are, three, two or three crosswalks that are located there, with the exception of the southeast corner on the Molton Parkway side. So we think adding some additional light there will make pedestrians in the crosswalk all the more visible to vehicles, particularly vehicles that are making the left turn out of the Willow Tree Center. And then as our landscaping has matured on Molton Parkway, we've also identified the need to modify the traffic signals that face oncoming southbound traffic on Molton Parkway as you're approaching Villa Iglesia. Our trees are getting bigger. We want to make sure that the traffic signals remain visible to motorists on southbound Molton, so we need to do some reconfiguration at that intersection. And along with that, we would like to install another flashing yellow beacon and sidewalk sign as you approach that Villa Iglesia-Molton Parkway intersection, much like we have as you're driving northbound on Molton Parkway, approaching Gates Twelve and Sixteen. We have that flashing yellow beacon in the median, and then a sign on the sidewalk side that draws people's attention to the coming traffic signal. So these are a series of smaller improvements that we're planning to package into one slightly larger project, which we think we can construct fairly quickly and use the ARPA money to do so. And then, last thing I wanted to talk about, some concepts that we're exploring in advance of our budget discussions with the council. One of these has to do with storage for our public works operation. So right now, we have storage space at our street maintenance contractor's facility in Laguna Niguel, it was formerly in Rancho Santa Margarita, but we use some of their warehouse space to store a variety of things, traffic poles, light fixtures, things that our maintenance providers use to do their jobs. We store cones, barricades. We store some extra chairs for City Hall because we're limited in the interior storage space here. Our space there is already limited, and I very much appreciate that our street maintenance contractor is willing to store anything at that location for us. But as we're looking to purchase new electronic message board trailers, which we had talked about a couple of meetings ago to help, you know, promote some responsible driving practices, we are running out of space. There won't be sufficient space in that facility to store new message board trailers. So we are looking at more local storage options that would allow us to move either some or all of what we have stored in our contractor's facility closer to the city. One of the added benefits of that might be that it could provide an alternate construction staging location as well. Right now, when we have construction projects, for the most part, the construction staging takes place at City Hall's parking lot. That creates quite a bit of wear and tear on the parking lot, so as we're looking to repave our parking lot, we think there might also be an opportunity here to identify a staging location that is not on our parking lot, which would help to extend the usable life of the new pavement once it goes down. So I don't have a ton of additional information for you on this, except that we're basically aware that we have a storage need that has grown over time, and that we would like to explore some ability to store that closer to Laguna Woods rather than in the Laguna Niguel facility. So we're going to be looking at that and hopefully coming back with some strategies as part of your upcoming budget process. And then the other thing that we're taking a look at right now is potentially relocating the bus stop and bus shelter that's currently located on eastbound El Toro Road, really right outside of City Hall. It's near the Aldi sign at the driveway on El Toro. That bus shelter and bus stop, a lot of buses stop there, it's a timed spot, so if the bus gets there early, it stays at that location until its scheduled departure time. When it does that, it obstructs a lane of traffic, there isn't a bus turnout there, it actually stops in a travel lane. And that travel lane unfortunately is right after two driveways, one exiting the gas station, one exiting the Willow Tree Center. So we're looking at ways that we might improve that, and one of the things that we're considering, and I'll switch to this next image here. So the one over here, I mean, let my cursor catch up, but the one is where the bus stop is right now. So you can kind of see where the concrete pad is that sticks out into traffic where the bus actually stops. We're exploring the possibility of moving it to the other side of City Hall in front of the, sorry, my cursor's lagging today, in front of the adult day services building, where we have expanded right-of-way there, we have a wide sidewalk, and then we actually have a portion of the landscaping behind that sidewalk. So we have enough space to construct a recessed bus turnout that would allow us to pull that bus out of traffic, which we think would improve the throughput on El Toro, but also create a safer experience for people getting on and off the bus, and for people who remain on the bus themselves, rather than being stopped in traffic, they would be stopped at a turnout that would resemble something more like the turnout that's just past the Molton Auto Spa on Molton Parkway just north of the Molton-El Toro intersection.
Saying you would widen the road there?
We wouldn't widen the road, we would look to construct a turnout in the right-of-way, so you'd remain the three lanes of traffic.
So, pardon me, when you're looking there?
Yeah.
You would be taking part of that, moving the sidewalk in?
Exactly.
Okay, toward the Alzheimer's daycare thing? And then, how, is, what right-of-way issues are there?
So we, we have sufficient right-of-way to do that. We have a very large section of right-of-way there. We have the wider sidewalk, we have the landscaped Parkway between the sidewalk and the street, and then actually on the backside, between the sidewalk and the Alzheimer's OC building, we actually have a portion of the right-of-way that extends into that landscaping. So it's even wider than our already wide sidewalk.
Was that that came with the road?
That came with the road, yeah. So we have quite a bit of right-of-way there, so as we were looking at this issue, it's like, well, if we move the bus stop down a little bit, we have all of this extra right-of-way to play with, which would allow us to pull the bus out of the lane when it's stopped there, as opposed to obstructing one of the three lanes of traffic on that eastbound side.
Is there any requirement between the bus stops between each other that you have? Is there something there?
Yeah, so we, there are... I say that there are design guidelines that OCTA has where they prefer their bus stops be located. We have started that discussion with OCTA. I don't think there's a distance issue so much as, I think OCTA at least initially expressed some preference for the number one location, but we think that the...
Put a streetcar there maybe?
I think that that's because it's the proximity to the Molton and El Toro intersection, but I think that when all of the factors are laid on the table, the safety benefit for the bus patrons and the bus drivers themselves, I think will outweigh the kind of knee-jerk preference for the existing location. But I say that to say we're still exploring this, we're still talking to OCTA about it, we've retained Iteris to take a look at some of the engineering implications of it, but offhand, I think from the staff perspective, we like the idea of being able to create a safer environment for the bus patrons while also minimizing and reducing obstructions of the roadway itself for vehicles. So I think it could be a win-win for everybody, we're at the early stages of looking at it. I just wanted to give you a heads up that this is another thing that we'll probably be talking to you about when we get into the budget process for next year.
Have you been thinking, have you given thought to the possibility of expanding the pad that is there already? I understand the landscaped area between the sidewalk and the parking lot belongs to Willow Tree Center, and then the parking lot belongs to us. Have you considered a method to acquire any easement or possession of the landscaped area so that the bus stop could stay where it is close to Molton and just take space farther inland?
So we have, we actually approached the Willow Tree Center about that some time ago, there wasn't a ton of interest. The landscaping and the parking lot behind that existing bus stop are actually Willow Tree Center property. The city's parking lot property is located further east, so we would have to acquire either property or an easement over the parking lot, the landscaping, in order to make that possible. And even then, we have less space, I think, to conceivably work in because we can't take so much space from the parking lot that we obstruct the parking lanes themselves. The other issue there is we have some mature trees in that landscaping, and they're not our trees, they're the Willow Tree Center's trees, but they're the big, they're eucalyptus trees, I think, right? We have a couple of those trees there that if we were to keep the stop in the same location, we'd have to cut those down as well. So again, we were just, we're looking for an option that kind of uses a space that's already ours and minimizes the aesthetic impact. The other thing with location one is really this whole discussion started because we have those two driveways right behind that bus, so if you're, if the bus is stopped there and you're one of those cars trying to exit the Willow Tree Center or the gas station, you're potentially making a turn with pretty limited visibility. I think even if we kept the bus stop at location one, we wouldn't be able to fully pull it out of the lane of traffic, so you'd still have some of that visibility concern there. For whatever reason, we happen to just have much more right-of-way at the number two location, so I think that to us looks like the potentially best option if we can get OCTA on board with it.
Yes, I did, and I apologize, you went on to the next one. When you were talking about the traffic signals at Villa Iglesia?
Yes.
Am I confused about that location? Isn't that, is that in our city?
Yes.
On the one side? I know on the one side is our city, but on the other side?
So we have El Toro all the way down past... I always forget the name of that street, but I think it's Gate Three, right?
Yes.
So we, we have El Toro past that. Via Iglesia isn't our street, but we have, or I'm sorry, Molten Parkway, yes. But we have, we have control of that intersection.
Okay, that's why I was confused.
So when you make the right turn off of southbound Molten onto Via Iglesia, then you're in Aliso Viejo. But when you're on El Toro, crossing through the intersection with Via Iglesia, you're in Laguna Woods.
Okay, that, that, that was my confusion. Thank you.
Chris, would you go back to the map again? Will you take your arrow and point out exactly where the possible changes would be on the bus stop?
Yes, so number one, right here, the yellow number one, that is the existing bus stop location. We-
Then I can look out the window and see.
Yes, correct. Yes, you can look and see from City Hall. And then we're looking at potentially moving it to where you see the number two, which is right in front of the Adult Day Services Building. And the building next to it here is the Olive Garden Building. Yeah, so we would move it in front, generally speaking, somewhere in front of the Adult Day Services Building. So it would be, I think I saw a number earlier that it'd be roughly like eight hundred and twenty-five or so feet from the existing bus stop location.
A short block all the way up to back to Molten and the intersection there. Okay.
Yeah.
And now, once more, just give me a little, or give us just a little description of where we own, what, what we own.
It's hard to tell here, but the sidewalk, so we have the road, then we have this little planted area. You can see some trees popping up and some bushes. That's ours. The sidewalk behind that is ours. And then there's a couple of feet behind the sidewalk that is in the landscaped area in front of the Adult Day Services Building. That's ours as well. That landscaping area, there's a portion that's the cities, and then there's a portion that is the Willow Tree Centers. So if you go out there, you can actually sort of see there's a, in some places, there's like a little wooden divider that's there. It actually extends all the way in front of the Catholic Church as well. If you look in front of the Catholic Church, you can see a couple of feet behind the bus stop and the sidewalk there is the cities. And then there's a little bit of a border type of thing. And then behind that is more grass, but that grass is the Catholic churches.
Are we considering at one time refinishing, refurbishing, or doing something to the stops and the little canopies that are there?
Yes, so you have a capital project in next year's budget for us to start the design process for designing city-specific bus shelters because we expect the agreement with Clear Channel Outdoor through which we get our current bus shelters to either be terminated at some point or certainly not renewed beyond its existing term, which off the top of my head, I think is twenty twenty-seven or thereabouts. So we are anticipating that at some point we will have to replace bus shelters with bus shelters of our own. This very well could be kind of the first opportunity to do that with the relocated bus shelter if we end up pursuing this.
Have plenty of room in the relocation. We will eliminate some trees.
There, depending on how we set it up, I suspect that we would lose a tree or two. I think there are magnolia trees that are currently in that thin strip of landscaping between the sidewalk and the street. But I would also imagine that because we have so much right of way there, that we would probably seek to plant additional trees at the backside of the sidewalk. But that would all be kind of teased out during the design process. We wouldn't be losing mature, older growth trees like we would if we tried to do an expanded bus stop at the number one location. There we would for sure because of the eucalyptus trees.
So we would see those trees I'm looking at now would go away then if we had-
If you kept it where it was and tried to enlarge it, yes.
Try to keep where it was. Okay, good.
Okay, so, yeah, I would like to ask a question. So the golf cart path, what would impact the golf cart path there?
We, we have sufficient right of way there to be able to maintain the golf cart path, pull the bus out of the street, maintain the sidewalk. None of that, the configuration would change, but you would still have the ability to travel in a golf cart through that location.
I think this is a great idea because besides the bus and its passengers, it affects all the cars. You get stuck behind that bus and people take chances to pass it and move. So you create, the bus itself, blocking a lane creates a hazardous situation, so.
Particularly with that turn right there. You got traffic going this way, you got it turning and right turning, and it just stops.
Well, you've got potentially traffic from two directions coming off of, coming off of Molten, and then you've got the two driveways, which put yet more traffic on it.
And turning left from going that way, right from Molten going the other?
And, and so, you know, especially during rush hour, it's a busy thing.
In the next couple of weeks, what do you say?
Probably not in the next couple of weeks, but the idea has been planted, so.
Good idea.
There is an opportunity today for public comments on this item. I don't need any action from the City Council. I just wanted to give you that information, but if there's any public comments, we can take those now as well.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. You seven people are representing over eighteen thousand people that live in this city. Does anybody have any comment on this particular issue?
We've got at least one. Yoli's gonna help with the mic.
Actually, you've moved beyond the issue that I wanted to comment on, which was traffic control. Can you deal with that within the village, within the village?
No. So the streets within the village are private streets, so that's a mutuals, GRF type of issue.
There is a problem intersection I wanted to discuss, but thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Vicki.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Catherine, are you gonna come up? Go ahead, you're, you're-
Vicki, did you have a comment as well?
Yes, I did, but we'll wait for Catherine here.
Go ahead, no, go ahead. You're there.
Well, I just wanted to say yes to the bus cutout because I'm an avid mass transit user and just the presence of more permanent bus stop-looking nice things is a, is a plus for mass transit.
Thank you.
Mine is just a simple question. You have here future grants. The Paseo de Valencia-Molten Parkway Confluence Bypass, what is that?
The Paseo de Valencia Confluence Bypass Project is a joint project with the city of Laguna Hills. The name may not be familiar, but I know we've talked about it before. It's the one where we're replacing some of our copper wiring with fiber wiring. We're replacing a couple of traffic signal controllers, some of the equipment in the boxes itself. It's grant funded for eighty percent through OCTA, twenty percent is borne by the city. Laguna Hills is doing more extensive improvements in their city. But it also involves traffic signal synchronization from, for us, it's from Valencia at El Toro up to the Molten and El Toro intersection, then turning north and going up to the Santa Maria intersection with Molten Parkway. But for us, primarily, it'll be stuff that will be more or less invisible to residents, but will allow us to better control our intersections.
Okay, I remember that from a year ago, so.
A year ago, and the name is, the name is not something we picked. That was Laguna Hills' choice, so.
Thank you. No other comments from the public. This matter is now complete. We come now to, we don't have a closed session. It's, we don't have a closed session items, all right? We're now at City Council Reports and Comments. We'll start with the Green Belt Authority. Councilmember Annie McCary.
Thank you, Mayor Hatch. The Coastal Green Belt Authority has not met since my last report. So we meet again in October?
October, good, thank you. And the Fire Authority, the chief has given a report on activities there. I will mention one other one that I received at the end of September, a report from our, Matt Olson, who handles all of our public matters and papers and so forth. He said that the United Forest, or the U.S. Forest Service is currently engaged in practices and policies that do in fact detract from our mission in ways that believe, that we believe endanger our region and everyone in it, in it. Which is a dramatic statement to make, okay? And it essentially stems from the fact that they have exercised a almost unknown provision in some act, the chief may know where, but that says that we may not fly our helicopters and other things at night. I.e., we can't fight fires using those instruments at night. And that is apparently ties our hands in a very serious way. So I guess the chief is working on that and it's going to be made public a little bit. And the other issue, again, the federal government that is of concern is the Forest Service inability, and this has been going on for a number of years apparently, to recruit and hire firefighters that go into the wilds and, and don't fight the fires, but do what the chief described of cleaning the outside edges and that sort of thing. And for a number of years, people have been leaving the service. The pay is a matter of deep concern for them. They're just not getting paid. And for some reason, the federal government apparently is just not addressing it. I don't know that you've heard anything more from the chief and the staff, but that was a lengthy report that we received that the chief is addressing. And apparently, I guess they're hopeful that at least they can get rid of the nighttime elimination of the helicopters and other nighttime planes that drop the water. Other than that, if you can go to the helicopter on the twenty-eighth, that's, that'd be an experience that you'll enjoy. But things are busy. Now, raise one hand, raise both hands, chief. If you're enjoying life and if things are going relatively smoothly. Attaboy, baby? Okay. All right. Next. The Library Advisory Board, Councilmember Moore. What's happening in the library?
We haven't met, but I did want to make a quick comment on the helicopter. I have a feeling that was established when the cities started buying helicopters and following cars and so forth. And there was some question as to whether all of that was really necessary. So they, so at night to not have people disturbed. I have a feeling that, I don't know that, but I tend to think that's what happens. And now you have to correct a rule that was made, blank statement, that doesn't fit anymore. But the, because the helipads that you're using now, the Yorba Linda, the one over in Aliso Viejo, I don't believe you could ever take from Barbara Lake, could you? I thought that you could never do that.
I don't think-
They all have the restrictions in there.
I thought it was, there was restrictions because of environmental, you can't just take from anywhere, even though you might like to. But anyway, with their adding the helipads, which are certainly a, a good preparation for what's going on. The other part had to do with, you're talking about the federal government, but I happened to attend a webinar with the state having to do with clearing out forests too. And they have learned that you're better off to have more fires lower and clear out some of that than it was to have these, you know, huge buildups and then you have these huge fires with so much fuel that is very difficult. So state and, pardon?
No, go ahead.
Because they state and federal have that issue of not, you know, not clearing out. So it's a ordinarily, looking back historically, there were fires and they weren't, they just weren't great, huge fires, but there were fires. And they, they cleared out some of that, they do believe. So, you know, there's, there's some changes that we have to adapt to and, and figure out how to handle that. But the helipad idea of having the, the water there, that's a must. My goodness gracious, if you can cool down right at the very start, you can really get things going, particularly when we don't want to use, some of us are not real happy with the foam business and running into the watershed. So you have, you know, a lot of issues with humans and our effect on the planet.
Irvine has now left the library system, has they not?
They are, yes, that will be, they're gone. I think it's formally effective, you know, it, it's effective in the sense that things are being done and moved and they didn't get the money as we talked about. And that was kind of a sad situation there, I'd say. But anyway, it worked out fine for the library because the library had, still did not, it does not harm the library. The, the system, the library, the county system.
Good.
So that's the, a big thing and that we're happy about that. Lot of, lot of book, I will bring up one thing that there are a lot of, and you can see them online. If you, if you have a card, if you don't, I suggest you consider strongly getting one. They're having some great speakers, some good authors are speaking nearby. I mean, really well-known authors and, and I think it's worth it to what's going on. So a lot, a lot of things going on with the library. And I think if you go to their website, you'll see a lot of it too.
Great. Thank you. I have a sense that the mosquitoes have not yet arrived. Is that an idle dream on my part?
That's very funny.
Okay, anyway, what, what about the mosquito and vector control? Give us hope.
Okay, Chris, can we roll, please? We have a little video about what they do.
Give us just a moment. If you want to maybe go on to the next one while we get it queued up for-
All right. San Joaquin Transportation Corridor. We're still solvent, and what else do you have?
The toll roads are becoming a statewide and national leader in tolling technology. And the current buzzword is interoperability, which means you can take your Fast Track on your car. And the goal is to be able to drive it on any toll road in the country.
And get one bill?
And, and get a bill back to your home account.
One bill for all of the trip?
Yeah.
Okay, go.
Do you have a toll roads pass?
Yeah.
Okay. And the toll, our toll roads have become the tolling agency and the back office operator for Riverside County Transportation Authority, which has now opened toll lanes on Interstate Ten. And everything is just transmitted electronically to us and we process it and we make sure the money goes where it's supposed to and we send out the letters and notices to the folks. It seems to be working very well and we look to be expanding because we're so good. That's it.
That's scary. Pull the, pull the transportation corridors all over the United States.
You know, I used to think that that more things were private than are private. When the toll roads do transportation studies, they have a contract with a company that installs a reader at, for example, the southernmost portion of two forty-one. And then there's another reader up at the end of two forty-one where it merges into ninety-one. And if your cell phone is operating, you know, if it's there, it reads your cell phone signature when you get on and then reads it again when you get off. And that way it knows how long it takes to traverse that distance and how fast the traffic is going. And they say that it's not personally identifiable information, but nonetheless, I find it a little spooky.
It's been a while since I've done that, but if I'm gonna go to Palm Springs and I take the toll roads, two sixty-one, go over there to ninety-one, there's a toll lane now, all the way now to Riverside and then to the turnoff to go over into Palm Springs?
There, there is a toll lane- There, there is a toll lane all the way to, I'm going to say to Highway 15.
Oh, that, okay.
But it's hard to get into it right now, when you, when you get onto the 91, there are those little white ballards that stick up as far as the Orange County line. And once you get into Riverside County, then you can move into the toll.
15, 15 is still free both ways, isn't it?
Yes.
It's a new world in a lot of ways.
We can go back to the vector report if you'd like? We have the video ready to go.
All right, good.
Most of it's free.
15 is not free, there are toll lanes, toll lanes on 15 going north from the 91 up to 16 to the N.
But most of it's free.
In the outside lanes.
All right, we can go ahead and play the vector video.
Trader Joe's organic jasmine rice, like it too.
That was some of our staff and what they do every day, treating the flood channels and picking, seeing where there's mosquito breeding, and I'm actually going out with one next week. They came around the house to look at our little dryer cups, and there's no breeding in our dryer cups, but those big potted plants, they suggested pea gravel, not as much water will fit in them, but less breeding will happen. There were slides, two, please? That's not important, okay. Here's the West Nile virus in all of California, human infections. Okay, here it is in Orange County, we only had one human infection this year, but 37 positive mosquito pools and one dead bird, and you can see on the map where they were located. Next slide, please. Invasive 80s mosquitoes, now they're in every single city in Orange County, and these are the total Dengue acquired cases. You can see where they are compared with last year, you can see how much higher those orange bars are this year than they were last year. Go ahead, next.
Where have they congregated so much in the north part of the county?
Density.
It's a density?
Density and water.
Not, but, okay.
Yeah, water drainage.
Right, and more water up there and more density, like she said. Okay, next slide, please. Fleaborne typhus is also a big thing right now, there's nine cases of human cases, flea samples, there's 114 from dogs, cats, horses, rodents, raccoons, and you can see how the circle of life goes there, also mostly in the North County. Next slide, please. This is fun, we had, the pilot sterile insect technology program has been going on for a while now. We built out our labs to breed enough of these mosquitoes, because we had to breed enough male mosquitoes and irradiate them. So what they did in this pilot project where they went to Mission Viejo is they irradiated them, they, according to the way they were treated. So there's pink ones, blue ones, yellow ones, red ones, depending on how much radiation they got, at what point in their cycle they were irradiated, because we radiate them after they're in the pupa stage, so when they're alive, we irradiate them. And we get to see how far they fly, so to know if they got the higher dose of radiation, if they were still virile enough to fly four miles or not, if they keeled over at the first mosquito trap they came to. So we've been collecting the traps, and next meeting we'll see, the meeting this month was canceled because of League of Cities, but next month, we'll go and see what the results were from this study. We're very excited about this because like the fruit fly and other kinds of insects that they have done, these kinds of, whether it's the genome, whether it's irradiation, whether it's a Wolbachia bacteria, whatever they've done, they've gotten very good, like a deep, the deep flea Fresno was like 99% successful. So there's no way to get rid of these mosquitoes now. Unfortunately, they're here, they're breeding, and they're, more and more diseases like Dengue is now being locally transmitted too. And so we want to be able to, if we could just reduce the 80s egyptides, it would improve our quality of life a lot. So, so that, that's my vector report. Thank you.
That isn't a happy report, is it?
Well, I'm excited about the insect technol, the sterile insect technology, yeah, because I, I don't like spraying poisons all over everything.
Okay, the liaisons, the community bridge builders.
I think you skipped the watership management area.
That's our, that's fine, we didn't have a meeting.
All right, go ahead, who's going to do it? Go ahead, let's go on the watershed.
No, no report from watershed.
Okay. Yeah, we have a big multicultural dance thing, November 8th.
November.
November 8th, and we have dancers from seven different countries, Iran, Israel, Mexico, America, Korean, Chinese, I don't, I lost my fingers there, so I don't know whether there's any more or not, but we have, and so we're going to open the show with a dance for everybody, and then each different country will come up wearing their own different costumes, and they'll have food, and they'll have all kinds of things to, and Annie is going to be the narrator, so she'll be talking about all the different countries, cultures, foods, cultural ideas that we can display, and we will be going around all the different tables, so to bridge a divide that there may be and make friends. So that's my report from the bridge builders.
Annie, do you want to add anything to that?
No, what, what Councilmember Moore just said, you know, the, one of the exciting things about this program is that people will be able to sample foods from the different countries, and that's another way of bringing people together to understand the different cultures is through their, their specific foods.
I think I intended something that might have been connected with that, it was a class on learning to listen to other people's point of view and not be angry, and, and I thought it was an interesting class. Obviously, some people had never had, I, when I was in school, we did learn what ad hominem arguments were, and, and so I think I understood some of it. But anyway, it was an interesting class, and I think the people that taught it were certainly seemed well-trained in their area. I think they were called braver angels, as I would call. And anyway, I think that was an interesting class.
Yeah, that wasn't, that was not in conjunction with the bridge builders, but I too attended that.
Well, the woman who was there said that they were all, so I assumed it was connected with it, they weren't, okay.
No, no, it was a separate one. It was an informative program as well.
Yeah, it was a needed, it's a program that's needed, I would say, and, and they seem to do a good job with it, so maybe they can teach it to others, that maybe we can have a report from them, the braver angels.
And actually, they've done it before, they've done this before with the brave angels.
Have they?
Yes, they have, yeah.
Yeah.
Good, thank you for bringing that up. We'll now have, in alphabetical order, Connors, McCary, and Moore, their report on the California Joint Powers Insurance Association Annual Meeting in Palm Springs.
Thank you. I'm going to start just with an overview. You, people out here in the television universe probably don't think about this much, but State Farm and Progressive are not going to write insurance for inadequate street lighting or mugging on public property or unsafe intersection design or failure to have a guardrail or anything like that. So the city of Laguna Woods, along with 125 other cities and water districts, park districts, transit districts, is a part of the Joint Powers Insurance Authority. It's an organization created by statute, and it includes as, basically as many organizations as want this kind of coverage and are willing to abide by the, the rules of the organization. It continues to grow. And our premiums are based on the size of our budget, the number of employees we have, and our claims history. Anytime there's a claim against the city, it goes to the Joint Powers Insurance Authority, and they have experts, they have lawyers of all sorts, and investigators of all sorts, and analysts of all sorts, and they decide what happens to the claim. At some point, they decided that rather than just paying claims, it would be a good thing to reduce the number of claims, and that's when they began doing this risk management They generally deal with the basics like how to avoid claims for wrongful termination or for harassment or for discrimination, or how to handle workers' comp claims, or the importance of a safe workplace. They want to, this time, they had things on such arcane subjects as minimizing risks associated with utility companies' use of right-of-way. I think Chris found that one to be very, very useful. So there's always someone who will find it useful. There was one on compliance with the American Disabilities Act, there was one on cybersecurity, how to protect city computers from viruses and malware, and how to protect our customers' credit card information. There were two on attitude and burnout that I thought were very good. And there's usually something, there's usually an emphasis on promoting organizational excellence, just in the sense that if you have really good office atmosphere and people are happy in their work and supervisors pay attention to the people, that the people will bring their best work to the job and, and do the most for our residents. So overall, this was, the ones, that was the one I liked the most, was by Mark Schulman, the professional drummer, and I think other people are going to talk about him because he was very good. So that's what this organization is about, and that's what this forum was about.
Annie, what would you add to that?
Yeah, in addition to everything that Councilwoman Connors mentioned, what I, well, a couple of other ones that I thought were very informative, one was managing disruptive public meeting. They gave us some really good points about that, I took a lot of notes, and I found it very interesting, and I think the feedback in the group was pretty animated as well. So that, I found that one very, very informative. Another one was the cybersecurity and learning about the vulnerabilities and actually learning what cyber hackers are looking for, stuff like they look for the vulnerabilities within the city, and they look at the, the big disruptions, they don't just, in addition to hacking little small companies, they look for big organizations to see what's really important, what's really prevalent in their city, like the source of electricity, the water, communication, transportation. So that was a whole big discussion about security and what organizations should consider as valuable, and some of the things that you can do to minimize your risk. I thought that one was really interesting. There was another one that I found interesting, had to do with artificial intelligence, and actually just the defining what artificial intelligence really is, and how organizations can be at risk for just being exploited by what's called artificial intelligence. And so I, I took a lot of notes, I found it very, very interesting and very informative.
Thank you. Carol, what would you like to?
Yeah, I, I, part of the, of attending those, I have an opportunity to meet people from other cities, and I also get to meet people from, who are specialists in their area. And I did meet two people who were with Chubb, which was quite interesting in that I am extremely interested in the insurance part, and in, in that case, they were reinsurers, and by the way, they weren't admitted, Chris will know what I'm talking about. And I had a nice conversation with them, and they, in their case, they take only a small, a very small bit of the JPIA reinsurance. And then, sitting at that same table, were the two people who are in cybersecurity. One was a former FBI, his name was John Carruthers, and then Wynne Powell, who was also, the two of them presented the cybersecurity workshop, but it was interesting, I think I learned more that night than I did at the workshop, actually. The, it's interesting that the people who are doing this are, it's surprising, because you think, well, who, who is involved in this? And it's the bad actors in the countries that you're not surprised at they're involved in it. And, and he indicated it is difficult, because it is, it is in most cases, like it's Eastern European countries, Russia's also involved, and, you know, Iran, and he, he mentioned the difficulties of dealing with these situations, because they have, it's not so much the money, they just want the disruption, that's their whole purpose. So I, I, I think understanding what's going on and trying to protect yourself, and of course, they have a number, and I think James also presented some things that we can do, but before even went, by the way, I think we should take a look at those. Then I too felt that the speaker was, was a positive person, and I think I really did enjoy that. Meeting the people and learning was important, I thought the speaker was very good, and he had my attention, he had the attention of the people there, and he understood how to keep you engaged so that you weren't drifting off and people were staying with him. There was one last thing that I had in mind there, oh, I knew what it was, I thoroughly enjoy the litigation issues, and I think, I would think you probably would like it more than me, but, but I still like it. And I think that those cases are always so interesting, because they had one where the, the person had, was accused of misbehavior working in a city, and so then when the manager indicated, well, we need to talk, and the person said, well, now you're harassing me because you're, because I misbehaved and now you're trying to harass me. So that became an interesting, you know, is that harassment, when you're trying to work with a person and train them to correct a behavior that was inappropriate. In the, the one that you mentioned, that it had people coming to meetings, there were two, two city council people there, and I think they had slightly different points of view, and I, having served on as the president of Third Mutual and having some real experiences from floods and people's cars damaged, 50 cars were damaged, wanted some people coming, and they were very, very angry. It's my, my observation with people, that you're better off to, if they're angry, to listen to them, just let them talk, and I get a nod because I think that's probably what you would do too. And that is, don't take it personally, they're, they have a problem, they're angry, and let them speak, cutting them off only makes them infuriated. The other person wanted to time people and do all this, and I thought, you know what, you're going to cause more problems. I felt the other person addressed the problem more proper, at least a way I would handle it, and that is to not get involved and drawn into somebody's drama, listen to it, understand that they're angry, and try to figure out, you know, why they're angry, and try to understand their point of view. That's my take on when you have people who are angry. I bet I think cutting them off and, and cutting their time, and you may think you're getting even, you're just making them more angry and making everybody else un, just not happy too, so I didn't, I didn't think that was a good solution particularly. I think they addressed something else there that those two people, and I'm trying to recall what they addressed, oh, I think it had to do with, again, it had to do with behavior at councils. One of them did have a very serious problem, and it's hard for me to, I shouldn't be judging because I wasn't there at their problem, and they could have had difficulties that I wasn't aware of, but at any rate, I did take the point of view of the other person to keep calm and not be drawn into somebody else's drama. And all in all, it was very productive, and I thought the litigation... productive, and I thought the litigation answers were, you know, what is going on? And they did have one, Chris, that was kind of interesting, had to do with some trees, a tree that fell. And I talked to the gentleman afterwards, because I was kind of interested. It has to do with your responsibility and the tree falling on somebody's house and really damaging it. And had to do with purposely planting the tree, and whether it was there. I mean, it was, that, that was an interesting case, because I was thinking about our trees out here, or trees anywhere, actually, you know, how responsible you are when that tree falls off. I don't think we have any near anyone's house, thank goodness. I think those are all in the village, so, but we have light poles.
Now, just to thank you all, it, it was, it has always been an outstanding event and very educational.
I think it is, too.
And I think this particular year, I'm impressed with the reports, because it sounded like it was a very substantive time. Just for the retail audience, and for the chief, just, and since you gave a little presentation about the event itself, name some of the cities that, or either of you, that are part of.
Lake Forest. You meet there, other people.
What, what?
We're there.
Yeah.
Ojai.
Looking to be.
All right. Go ahead. Ojai, Lake.
Lamede.
Gualita, all over California.
Oh, yes, yeah. Well, the ones that belong to the JPIA.
And medium-sized cities, right? You don't find the Los Angeles or the San Diego people there, right?
The big cities are usually self-insured.
They probably have different.
Yeah, so it's the medium-sized, and a lot of them in Southern California.
They're all the customers of JPIA, of course.
Yeah, right. That's what I'm saying. So they're cities like us, only, I imagine what the largest might be.
Oh, no, Duarte. How big is Duarte? Twice as big as us? You would know. Is it twice as big?
Yes, about that.
Okay, so, so Duarte, I, I just think of them because, I, and I think, oh, well, Diamond Bar, because I know some of the people who are on the executive committee.
Irwindale.
Pardon?
Irwindale.
Uh huh.
Like-minded folks, really.
I would say, I would say.
I want to say one more thing about the keynote speaker, talking about maintaining excellent performance and organizational excellence. This guy was a rock star. His name was Schulman, Mark Schulman, and he was a drummer. And he had toured for nine years with Foreigner. He had performed with Billy Idol and Pink, and he was on a three-year farewell tour with Cher.
For three years?
Yeah.
Three-year farewell.
And, and the thing that he said, yeah, well, he said it was their first farewell tour.
It lasted a few years.
There were more that came after that. But he talked about how, how intentional he was when he was playing. Oh, first, he was dressed in this like gold lame sleeveless vest, and his hair was white, sticking straight up on the top, and, and big.
Great glasses.
Big earrings and Billy Joel glasses, and he really, he looked like, he looked the part. But he said that when he plays the drums, everything he, every hit he makes is purposeful, intentional. How hard he hits, where he hits on the drum, what the dynamics are, the notes that he doesn't play. And he said the challenge is how to have the 800th time be just as engaged and purposeful as the first time. And that was, that's the thing that, that I wrote down that stuck with me, because I think that's, that's how you get excellent performance. And so.
I, I found that. I have to agree with that, because if you've ever, have you ever attended, really date myself, but when I was younger, I had an opportunity to see Judy Garland. And Judy Garland had a, a routine, but believe me, it was effective. When she was through with her show, she made you feel that you were the best audience she ever had. And she would play right to you, and you were just thinking, oh, I want her to sing another song or do whatever she does. That, she could have just said, you know, thanks and so forth. You've seen, if you've ever been to a performer who wants to keep themselves separate, and they're, you're, they know that they're getting money from you, but that's all you are, you're paying whatever. I've heard this from political people too. And you can tell they're insincere. You think, you know, you're giving me, you're not sincere. It comes out to you. And I thought the drummer pointed that out very well, that he, he makes sure that he gives what these people came for, they paid for it. And that was what I saw with Judy Garland. She made sure that you left feeling that she did that for you. So you paid, you paid for the ticket, and you felt like, gee, that ticket was worth it, because she's, you know, she, she, she likes you, even though she does it for every audience. Doesn't matter. It worked for you. And the drummer kind of brought that out too, I thought, that his, his ability. And I, I find that inspiring. I like that. I like people who have high standards and care. I, I like to be around people who care, because people who care will make you feel good, and you'll care too. So I particularly enjoyed it.
Thank you all. I want the four of you to know that this report, from all of them, were geared to the 3,000 people that are watching this meeting on television. So thank you all for, for a good report.
I had a quick one on LAVCO, since it's coming up. I've served on LAVCO, and I don't give a report, but probably from time to time, I should.
You probably should.
I, I, it, it's actually an important group. And coming up is a very interesting, well, actually, it's next week, I'm going to a, to a conference for LAVCO, and I think that will be particularly interesting, because I meet people from Northern California. The reason all this works, to me, it's important. I meet people from Northern California that ordinarily would not have any opportunity to meet them. And they have a very different perspective on, like, water. Their, their attitude towards water and our attitude towards water is not the same, you know? And I like to know how they feel. I like to know how other people are looking at things, because we're dealing with them. I want to know what their thoughts are. So, and because coming up in the end of this month, we will be coming out, LAVCO will be coming out. The staff has been working on a study. Well, first off, LAVCO does the MSRs, which are the municipal service reviews of all the cities and the, and the special districts. And even though there's no benchmarking, which, I don't know, Chris, what would your thoughts be on that? What if they benchmark the cities?
I, I think every year, well, not every year, but when we do the MSRs with LAVCO, there inevitably is some discussion about, would it make sense to benchmark? But, you know, I can only say that the discussion between cities and the LAVCO consultant has always been like, benchmarking is a good idea, but how would we actually do it, since the service delivery is so very different city to city? But I don't personally have any issue with.
Oh, you do well.
Benchmarking, if, if we can.
No, I think that'd be great. I think that would be helpful for you. The, the thing that I'm bringing up here, though, with LAVCO and these, and the things that go on with the municipal service reviews specifically, we have a Southern District, and, and, and I attend those meetings. And there are cities, not in the Southern District, but in Los Angeles, that they don't even, they get the municipal service review, I don't think they even present it to the council. And there's nothing that says that you must take that municipal service review and share it, you know, which a city councillor should be aware of some things going on, I would think. I, to me, that's very important. I spoke into Carolyn about it, you know, I said, I can't even believe that, that, that that happened. So, anyway, the end of the month is the, you may, people who are in the water industry are quite aware that there is the issue of MODOC and, and Orange County water, and Orange County water's wanting a study, because there are some people who would think that perhaps MODOC is not necessary. And I'm not going to go into the explanation today on the, of who MODOC is, but at another time, I think it's worth understanding how the system works, who MODOC is, why that can be important to us in South County with El Toro and so forth, because the water issue is not something that's just local. We, it, it encompasses our getting water from different areas and how that affects all of us. So.
Thank you.
Interesting topic.
Yes. Thank you, Carol. We have no closed session.
Can I just make one comment before we adjourn? I just want to correct myself. It was pointed out earlier today when I was talking about the El Toro Road and Molten Parkway Water Quality Improvement Project Phase Two. I referenced a delay related to the relocation of a Cox Communications Cable. It's actually an AT&amp;T cable. I did not want to.
Who's cable?
AT&amp;T.
Okay, no.
Did not want to unintentionally malign Cox Communications.
Thank you for clarifying that. Cox was going to be making calls.
Chris, don't ever let that happen again.
I, I'll do my best. I apologize.
All right. That ends the closed session report. This meeting is now adjourned to the next regular scheduled meeting, Wednesday, November 20th, 2024, at 2:00 PM. Thank you all for coming.
Mr., may I, may I make a comment?
For coming.
You made a comment about closed session. We did not go into closed session. You said this ends closed session.
I had already covered that when I had asked her if there was a closed session. There is no closed session. Meeting adjourned.